Mayor Steam.
President.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
President.
Councilmember Helly.
President.
Hagan.
President.
Fisher.
President.
Enright.
President.
King.
President.
Austin.
President.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
I got two agendas here. This one? That one? Okay, item number one is a motion for adoption of the agenda. We need a motion. So moved. Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item two is a motion to approve the minutes from July 17, 2017. Need a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Recognitions. We have Elizabeth Waifel from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. We had seen her for about three or four days last week, but we get to see her again, right Craig?
That's right.
At the annual meeting, the summer meeting.
Yes.
Elizabeth, what's going on?
Well, let me tell you. I brought you some reports because I know you want them. So, and it was great to see the mayor and Craig on the street. Missed the rest of you. But as I think most of you know, I'm with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. I do the environment and energy lobbying for the Coalition, as well as annexation and land use. And Coalition Austin is, you know, one of our very strong members, part of 90 cities that work across the state on local government aid, economic development, annexation and land use, transportation and environmental regulation. Here to tell you a little bit about the session. You know, it was an interesting session. We had an election that flipped control once again in the Senate, so we had GOP-controlled House and Senate. We were heading into a session when they had failed to finish the bonding bill, failed to finish the tax bill, and really hadn't gotten together on transportation either. So, a lot of to-dos in addition to the state budget. You know, we went into the session with what looked like a surplus, but you know, everybody has a different opinion on what you do with the surplus. We had the governor wanting to use it for education and find other dollars for transportation. GOP wanted to use it for tax cuts and transportation. And that was really the big fuss throughout the session. Our goal is probably not surprising to any of you familiar with our organization, trying to get LGA back up to that 2002 level, pass a huge, you know, bonding bill with infrastructure money, get some environmental reforms done, find a good transportation package, as well as some economic development. You know, where we stood, I think many of you remember, last year we got to the end of session, they almost got a tax bill done, but it didn't happen. That had included a $20 million increase in LGA. And we introduced a bill this year to get it up to $45.5 million. The magic behind that number is trying to get it back up to the 2002 level, which is where it was at before we, you know, had seen significant cuts due to deficits at the state level. Governor proposed $20 million. We had quite a number of bills that actually sort of went the other direction in the House. You know, we saw a lot of bills sort of attacking local government control this year, and one way that a lot of them did that was by trying to, you know, threaten cities that if you do this or that will take away your, or you don't do this or that will take away your LGA. Thankfully, none of those made it into the bills, but at least in the initial version didn't have a tax or an LGA increase otherwise. That first tax bill that got done did have a one-time increase for 2018 only. Problem is, is that the way the formula works, when you do it that way, when you would come off of it then the following biennium, a number of our cities would have actually been worse off. So, not something we wanted, but the bill got vetoed. The final bill did include $15 million increase for LGA. The good thing about that is it does, you know, it's permanent to the base, so the funding will continue to go up, and you know, want to be somewhat optimistic, we've been able to increase the base LGA appropriation, you know, by over $108 million in the last number of years. There were also some small fixes to make the LGA formula work as intended, which was especially helpful to some of our smaller members. So, you know, we didn't get everything we want. We would have liked to have seen more because we want to get it back up to that 2002 level, but we are continuing to push the needle up, and it does make a difference for our cities. Austin is actually, strangely enough, one of the few cities, just because of the way the formula works, that you're above your 2002 level, but this bump did also help you as well, and if we were to get it back up to the 2002 level, again, just the way your tax base is, it still would be beneficial. Um, sorry, I went the wrong direction on the slide. You can kind of see the difference here between the different proposals. I think the most important ones are, the orange is which, which is what it would have been if we would have gotten that increase up to the 45 level, and the final tax bill. If you still got a bump, you know, I mean, we're not going to sneeze at that, $150,000, nothing to sneeze at, you know, for the city, but we'd like to see, again, continuing, because, you know, when you don't increase that amount of money, that, you know, that $45 million over 2002, that doesn't include inflation. And I'm guessing Austin's budget, everybody else's budget, has had inflation hit since then. So, going to continue to work on that. Uh, sorry, I can't seem to hit the button the right way. Really pushing on infrastructure for the bonding bill. You know, failed the last minute last year. Biggest push we're making is on more money for clean water programs, you know, and I know that you guys will probably in the next couple of years need that, and what we're pretty much seeing is all of our cities, if you don't need it this year, we need it next year. So, we need to, on an ongoing basis, increase that amount of money, and as well as continuing to, you know, provide support for the BDPI program, which I know Austin has also taken advantage of. Sorry, bonding bill. You know, it took a little while. Senate came out with strong in favor of one, the House took forever to unveil their bill. Final bill passed at the end of special session, the very end, about $1 billion and $117 million for water infrastructure. Again, this is a glass half-full, half-empty kind of thing. It's not at that 167 level, you know, it's about 50 million short of that. And the reason we want to see that is because of the billion dollars of need forecast over the next couple of years. On the same token, that's the largest amount we've seen put into these programs, and we are happy, you know, it's, we've been calling attention to this issue over the last couple of years, and we feel like we're finally getting some traction. Also saw some money for BDPI and some other local projects. Transportation, again, it's something people don't stop talking about, but seem to see the same battle lines every year. Governor wants new revenue, GOP wants to spend the surplus and bond for new roads. It was a little bit different this year, though, because that discussion ended early when the governor said, "Yeah, you're right, we're not going to have new revenue." So, what we saw was us introducing a number of different bills. You know, we successfully created the city streets program for smaller cities, but we have a lot of cities, you know, like Austin and so forth, who have needs there as well, who are larger, and so we are trying to get a sort of program that will work for cities of all sizes. We also introduced some money for corridors of commerce, and we spent a lot of time, you know, raising our concerns about using general fund money for transportation, because then it, you know, it tends to crowd out other things. Final bill, very heavy on the general fund, $173 million in the first biennium, $415 million in new spending from there in the out years. We saw a lot of money from highway bonds put in there, as well as some one-time money bonding for corridors of commerce. We saw some money for the small cities on city streets, but we didn't get that larger city done, so we are going to continue to push on that as well. Just moving on to environmental regulation, we tried to do a number of different things. They're detailed in our, in the report, so you can take a bigger look at that, but really focusing again on that independent peer review, you know, trying to do some improvements on standards, and then also allowing cities more time to review their draft permits and designation of impaired waters. We ran into a problem last fall when the impaired waters list came out. Quite a number of cities kind of around here, just a little bit north of here, you know, ended up on the impaired waters list and just didn't have the time they needed to get the comments done. So, we made some changes around that process. Um, you know, the bills moved through the Senate, had hearings there. The House didn't hold hearings, but we still got it in the bill there. Myself and my colleague Bradley Peterson, we spent 13 meetings between about February and the end of the session with the governor's office and the commissioner of the MPC. Unfortunately, they did not budge on much. We did get a few things done, including improving the time for permits, draft permits in that final bill. So, again, glass half-full on this, you know, pushed the envelope, got some stuff done, not everything we wanted. The other thing I will note is that after the session was over, the commissioner of the MPC did, you know, issue advisory to his staff requiring, you know, that they sort of undertake some of the independent peer review changes that we had been pushing for. Didn't get put in statute, but at least, you know, they're starting to listen to us that this is something that they need to be doing. Economic development priorities, you know, continuing to work on this because our cities, you know, run into problems with this across the state. Got, you know, some money for workforce housing grants, some increased funding for the job creation fund, new exemption for estate and commercial property tax up to $100,000, and some money for broadband. Chappy waters ahead. You know, the mayor and Craig could probably tell you about the longer presentation we had on this, and will also make sure it's available on the website, but we are concerned about the high cost of that tax and transportation bill. You know, there's not a lot of room for error in the case of a downturn, and right now we're seeing tax collections trend downward. The state's got a healthy budget reserve, but it's something we watch. You can kind of see, this is what the budget looked like going into February, but taxes and transportation and HHS are going to grow quickly over time. I mean, we're really going to be seeing transportation take a big chunk out of the general fund. You know, in the tax bill, again, some of those tax cuts are not going to take effect for a couple of years, so we're going to see those probably in the next biennium when we could be running into challenges. I mean, you know, inflation, for political reasons, not worth getting into, is, you know, really not factored in the forecast, so our budget does not look nearly as healthy once you start factoring inflation in there. And, you know, the reason we care about this, for those of you, some of you, I don't know if any of you were around back in 2002, but you know, we saw this time and time again since then, when a state starts running into budget deficits, LGA is one of the first things they go after, you know, and that is why we are trying to pay close attention, and we'll be raising this issue at the legislature this year. We think it's really important that the state has a healthy budget. That's why we're concerned about, you know, where the transportation funding's coming from, because that really ties the state's hands when you dedicate money like that. You can see, the forecast has been, went down March, April, May, and then went back up in June, because I'm trying to be optimistic and hoping that the rest of the year is going to look more like June than those first couple of months. It is too early to tell, but it's something, again, we need to keep an eye on. So, what are the lessons for this, lessons from the session? You know, we can get some stuff done with this divided government that we had, but it did take a lot more work. We found that city leaders being involved this year was really, really instrumental. I mean, I think, I don't know what it has been over the last year or two, but we've seen a real strong increase. You know, I always say, Austin's always been a very active member, which is great, and we appreciate that, and I hope that really continues, but a number of our cities who kind of have been hiding in the weeds have really increased their activity this year, and sort of across the state, I think it really is helping us get things done. Challenges for next year? We've got a short session starting in February. We are really hoping that they will do a large bonding bill. We really need to get back on track with those investments. But the thing is, nothing has to get done. We've got bonding, you know, we've got our budget bills, so we hope they will pass a bonding bill, they don't have to. We could be seeing a deficit, we're hoping not, but again, we'll be watching out for that, and we also have an election year when you'll see half the legislature running for governor or something, which always has an interesting effect on what they do. So, a lot of, a lot of different challenges coming forward, so. Sorry, I forgot, I sent this to Craig before we went to the conference, so the upcoming, the summer conference has passed, but the upcoming events next fall, we've got our fall conference in November, our Legislative Action Day in March, and then our summer conference next year will be over in Mankato. Thank you again. Again, Austin's just a terrific city, very engaged, real important member, so we really appreciate all that you do. It's a lot of information, but does anyone have any questions?
Well, I would just like to thank the Coalition. This LGA is, for years and years now, I mean, our big issues are LGA and wastewater. Obviously, right now, we're getting some new regulations that are really ridiculous, but $15 million for LGA is not really, I don't consider that a win, but if it wasn't for the Coalition, I don't even know if we'd even have LGA anymore, and there's absolutely nobody fighting that fight for us but the Coalition, nobody whatsoever. Is there?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I think the league helps a little bit, but really, yeah, we are sort of the driving force at keeping the program and making it move forward, yes.
And there are many, many legislators who would like to see that program go away completely, because again, it's getting harder and harder. I mean, it's just a battle every year. I mean, I see it. It's just, it's, it's something. But anyway, we want to thank you for your efforts on our part, and keep up the good work, and I think, how many cities, I mean, one of the big problems is, is only, how many members in the Coalition?
We're up to over 90. We've added, you know, we kind of add a few in every, every year. We've been, recruiting has been going better over the last year or two.
And how many cities are there in Minnesota eligible, like 400?
Well, you know, I couldn't tell you the exact number. I want to say, probably it would be close to that, yeah, because really small cities, it doesn't, doesn't really make sense, and metro.
There's a lot of, a lot of cities that get a lot of LGA that will not even talk, I mean, I talked to some of them last month, and they won't even consider joining the Coalition. If half of those join the Coalition, this fight would just be just about over, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, there's, there really is, the thing about having a good, strong membership is that folks are hearing from constituents across the state. You know, when power shifts, it goes back and forth between the two parties, and having strong membership throughout the state so that people are hearing it from all of their locals officials is really how we're able to get things done.
Well, once again, I mean, that's, I guess that's neither here nor there right now, but we want to thank you for your efforts. You know, we've been members for years, I watched you guys work, and, I mean, they worked really hard for us, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right.
Great, and if you do have any questions, Craig knows how to get ahold of me. We are always happy to chat, answer any questions you have on any of these areas, so, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
And we will move on to item number four, is a motion for the consent agenda. We need a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number five. Under public hearings, it is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from Bigelow and Lennon Construction LLC. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. This is a tax abatement application for a new single-family home at 1320th Street Northeast. Value of the home is listed at $299,000. It's in conformance with our adopted policy. Council action is requested to approve the abatement.
Counsel?
I want to comment that I'm very happy to approve this tax abatement, but I'd be even happier if the same name wasn't further down on our delinquent properties that are in disrepair, so, want to get that on the record.
Okay. Anybody else? This is a public hearing. Is anybody in the audience that wishes to address the counsel on this? If not, we will entertain a resolution for approval or denial.
So moved, resolution.
For approval?
Approved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Six is a resolution receiving bids for asbestos removal at various building sites. Ms. Wallace?
Your Honor, we received court approval to raise or repair five residential properties and one garage. The residential properties are the only, the properties that are subject to this asbestos abatement. The city received bids from three companies. They're listed on a summary in your memorandum. The lowest bid was Safe Air System at $29,200, and we would recommend awarding that bid to Safe Air System.
Counsel, anything to add? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. On to petitions and requests. Seven is a resolution approving a transfer of Hard Licker on sale, and Sunday on sale to Carina T. Tufti DBA Hiawatha Bar. Man?
Yes, the Hiawatha Bar is just changing ownership, so we would request you approve the resolution to transfer their licenses.
Okay. Chief, you've done all unnecessary, okay, vetting. Counsel, you have anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eight is a, doesn't say, receiving a report from Vacation Commissioners in regard to North Fox North Point property. No counsel needed, there are no action needed. Stephen, you just going to give us a report?
Yes, I will.
All right.
So, the Fox Point Townhome Development has requested vacation of some existing right-of-ways to make room for their development. Those existing right-of-ways were plotted in excess of 10 years ago for the previous planned unit development. So, in order to make way for this new townhome development, we need to clear out these right-of-ways. There is not any existing utilities located in them, so it makes it easier to vacate these right-of-ways. The commissioners, which are made up of Lonnie Scaliki, Tim Lau, and Tom Claprick, met with John Erickson and myself to, at the hearing that was held last week. Commissioners reviewed all of the available information, and there's a report included in your packet, along with, they have made a determination that there is zero dollars of benefit for this right-of-way vacation. It's mainly based on that the property owners that dedicated the right-of-way originally are the same property owners that still own the property, and they are the ones requesting the vacation, so it goes back to them, and then will be reallocated through, with the new development. You can see also in your handout, there is an aerial photo showing a map of the area of the right-of-way that is to be vacated, and again, that right-of-way vacation only pertains to the townhome development area. And then the last page of, that is included in your handout on this item, kind of shows how the new layout of the cul-de-sac and three building units of townhomes there would fit on the property, and why that existing right-of-way needs to be vacated. That is all that I have.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Thank you, Stephen. Ten is, or nine is a resolution approving a contract with SEH for lift station telemetry.
Yeah, telemetry is the monitoring that we need to do of our 22 lift stations that we have throughout the community for sanitary sewer. Our current system is a telephone dialer system. We have a dedicated telephone line that goes from each individual lift station back to the treatment plant, and notifies us of high-water alarms, or pumps, or power outages, and things like that. That system is very old, and over the last couple of years, we've had a great deal of issues with that telephone system. So, we've received a proposal from SEH in the amount of $16,000 to develop plans and specifications for a new monitoring system. Estimate the total project to be $175,000 once completed, but what I'm requesting counsel approval for tonight is just the $16,000 to get started on the engineering design.
Counsel? And we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there, Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ten is a resolution approving an amended contract with SEH for consulting services for Phase One North Main Flood Control Project. Stephen?
Phase One is located right across the road at the downtown power plant. Counsel originally approved engineering services with SEH back in 2014, so approximately three years ago, they've been working on this project, and some changes have occurred during that process that were not in their original scope of work, and they are requesting payment for those additional, for the cost of those changes. Those would be, SEH needed to modify stormwater outlet, do some additional soil borings as part of their design, so there's some extra costs that were incurred by that. Also, there was some redesign with the Fourth Avenue Storm Sewer. We're incorporating some additional storm sewer into the project, and creating an outlet on the south side of the Cedar River Dam that was not included in their original scope, and then also just schematics and different things that have been created to help the Rec Center Committee with some of their decision-making on that site. Were outside of their original scope three years ago when we developed this project. So, SEH is requesting $55,680 that would be paid for 100% through our local option sales tax, and they are nearing completion of the final project design at this time.
Any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for ten. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution approving an annexation agreement for the cared property. Ms. Wallace?
Mayor and council members, the petitioners in this matter have requested annexation by the City of Austin of certain parcels that they own to access city services and to improve the marketability of their properties for potential commercial development. They own, let's see, they do have several parcels. Few of them are in Austin Township and one in Lansing Township. Tonight, the focus of this annexation are the Austin Township properties. The parcels are approximately 285 acres. They're located just west of the trailer park on West Oakland Avenue where it transitions to County Road 46. The subject area borders the city limits on the east, and the parcels are contiguous to each other. The annexation complies with our 2016 Comprehensive Plan, which requires that the city promote growth consistent with our plan. This includes recruiting new target industries, fostering a strong and diversified economy while providing living wage jobs, building capacity, and maximizing our readiness for economic growth and development, and to plan for the future industrial and business parks based on extension of utility services.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution for eleven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a resolution declaring the property located at 911 12th Avenue Northeast hazardous
structure. We need any, Holly, or any? No, I guess we just need a resolution unless anybody has any questions.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a series of three motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following location. A, 1007 Fourth Avenue Northwest, the Corfitch property, we need a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. B is 908 11th Avenue Southwest, Scataboo property, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. And finally, C is 1411 28th Street Southwest, Bigelow and Lennon Construction LLC Company, need a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Any citizens here tonight that want to address counsel on anything at all? Otherwise, we'll go to reports and recommendations. We'll start with Paul tonight.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Laura?
Nothing, Your Honor.
What about your partner? Do they have anything to add, partner? Janet?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jeff?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Steve?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
I just want to thank the citizens and people that came out for National Night Out. It was a great event until we got dumped on by the rain, but there was a lot of people there, and they were all having a great time. So, thank you for those that came out.
Craig?
Uh, nothing.
We have any reports?
Kim.
Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I want everybody to know that the pool's last day is next Thursday, the 17th.
Last day, already?
I know. But the splash pad will remain open like we did last fall, and that worked out very well. You'll enter the gate from the parking lot side. The doggie dip will then be on the 18th, so that is from 6:00 to 7:30. It's $2 per dog, which includes two humans, and any other humans are a dollar. So, if you want to go swim with the dogs.
When is the doggie dip again?
The 18th. So, the 17th, we are open in the evening till 8:30 that evening. This week, with the fair going on, we will not do our evening swim on Wednesday and Thursday night. It is open tonight, but we don't usually have enough attendance for those two nights, so, although if you're signed up for Zumba, Water Zumba, you can still go do that on Wednesday night, so, that's still available. And then I also want to tell everybody that there is the Fall Youth Hockey Skills and Drills will start this Wednesday, the 10th, so you can still sign up in our office for that, and it will run through September 14th. So, pop into the parking lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Craig? The only thing I want to say is, we did go to the conference, the coalition conference Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday last week, and it was not the, I don't think it was a lot of good news in there for us, that things seemed to be getting further and further away from us financially as far as LGA and some of the wastewater treatment stuff, but it was very informative. If there's nothing else, soon we will, anybody else have anything? We'll need a motion to adjourn until Monday, August 21st.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. We'll take a five-minute break, and then take a, make our work session across the hall.